Hello again, everyone. Welcome to another edition of Meet the People. My name is David Finer. I am the Communication Technology Manager in the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Innovation or Performance. Today, we're going to meet three new city employees who are not new at all, but they're in new positions. Those of you who have been paying attention to the City of Pittsburgh government, even a little bit over the last decade or more, you will recognize these three people. I would like to introduce the City of Pittsburgh City Council Budget Office. The brand spanking new, the bow is still tied, so please be kind. Pete, Ria and Paris, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I am really excited to talk about budget. I know that not many people say that out loud, but I love the concept of budgeting. But before we get to that, I want to talk about your personal backgrounds, where you're from, how you got here, and all that stuff. So let's start with the brand spanking new City Council Budget Office Director Pete McDevitt. Pete, where are you from? How'd you get here? Why'd you leave and why'd you come back?
Well, I grew up just north of the city in Ross Township. I went to California University of Pennsylvania. We like to call it the Harvard on the Mon down there. I graduated. I got a degree in accounting and I came to work at the Bank of New York Mellon. Eventually, I got married and my wife was actually a city employee. She was the Center Director at the Morningside Senior Center. And one night she had to stay late at work to keep the center open so they could have a capital budget hearing. So whenever I was done at work at BNY Mellon, I just took the bus to Morningside and hung out with her during the capital budget session. And then six months later, I applied to a job in the budget office, not knowing that that's what I'd be doing. And so then from there, I worked in asset management in the Mayor's Office of Management and Budget, and eventually became a senior budget analyst, working on the capital budget. And then I left about just over a year ago. I took a position at the Department of Human Services for Allegheny County, and then I quickly shifted again to do Kane Light, working in asset management. But then whenever I saw that these positions were open, I used to tell my wife too often that like, I don't think I'll ever go back to the city. It was like I was trying to convince myself because I missed it and I did love working here. So you know, everything came together and I'm super happy and excited to be back and working with Ria and Paris and just jump right into the budget in the middle of budget season.
Awesome. And you've been here 20 minutes and so far it's stupendous.
Oh yeah, it's been great.
Awesome. Well, welcome back. You have been, you are a face that people will recognize if they watch the City Channel once or twice. So we're happy to have you back.
They can pull up of seeing me getting yelled at at the City Council table. So now I'll be helping City Council members yell at other people.
Cool. Good to know. All right, Ria, let's hear your story. Where are you from and why'd you leave and why'd you come back?
Okay. Yeah, my name is Ria Price. I was born and raised in Cambria County in Pennsylvania. I went to the University of Pittsburgh for my undergraduate degree. And my majors back then were anthropology, psychology and gender studies. So far cry from what I'm doing now. And I worked at Deloitte for a few years and then I decided to go back to grad school to get my masters in public administration. And so I went to the University of Pittsburgh's GSPIA program. And my first job with the city was with PA Career Link as an Employment Services Coordinator way back in around 2006. And after a year of working there, I saw a position had opened in council budgets. Okay, so I worked as a budget technician in council budget for one year, but then a position opened up in the Office of Management and Budget in 2008. So I moved over into the Office of Management and Budget as a senior budget analyst. I worked my way up. I was promoted to operating budget manager. And eventually I was an assistant director and I oversaw the city's operating budget. I left in January of 2018 because I decided to move overseas to Thailand. So I lived overseas for a little under four years, I'd say. And I came back in May of, I came back to the United States in May of 2021. And I got a job as the budget manager for a town in Northern Virginia. So I worked there for almost exactly a year and these positions opened up. So I applied and I had a lovely job in Virginia. I mean, the people were awesome and everything, but it was a small town. I miss living in Pittsburgh. I miss my life in Pittsburgh. You know, I miss the diversity here. So yeah, I desperately wanted to come back. So I'm back.
Are you right now sitting in the same chair you sat in 15 years ago?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Is it the same exact chair?
No, 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 no.
Because I would say that would make perfect sense, though. If you were sitting in the same exact chair, that'd be great. Wow, in Thailand? I mean, most people leave Pittsburgh and they go to another American city, but Thailand is, I'm assuming not in Idaho. I'm assuming it's the Thailand. Oh, that's a huge jump.
Yeah, it was a huge jump, but it was an extremely positive experience. I loved living there. I highly recommend vacationing there. If anybody's interested, I can give you lots of tips. But yeah, like I didn't plan on being there permanently. It was supposed to be up to five years. And so I was actually supposed to come back right before the pandemic, but I had, you know, my flights back and everything, but then they were canceled because of the pandemic. And I was kind of stuck there for a few months because there was no flights back. And then I saw how things were playing out with the pandemic here and I was like, you know what? I'm just staying here for an extra year.
Smart, actually.
Yeah, no, it turned out to be the best decision I ever made in my life.
Well, we're glad you're back, Ria. We hope, we hope we can get you another new chair. Maybe you know some people who know some people. Maybe update the Venetian blinds too while you're at it.
Yeah, yeah, we still have the trouble I have with the blinds.
Yeah. All right, Paris, you have not left the city, but you have, you've worked for the city for a while and, but you're moving up, literally up the elevator and up in offices. Where are you from and how'd you get where you are now?
Yeah, so I'm from Pittsburgh. I've lived here all my life. I did get both my bachelor's in business administration with a minor in political science and human resource management, along with my MBA with a specialization in fraud and forensics from Carlo University. So I stay local.
Product forensics?
Fraud and.
Oh, fraud, fraud foren, okay. I couldn't figure out in my mind what product forensics was.
And it's basically dealing with like forensic accounting and different finance. You know, stayed in the financial and like financial part of things. But I did start like my real career in the banking industry. I started off at Dollar Bank as a teller and I moved over to P and C, dealing with the online banking and inbound sales and things like that. And from there, I moved to the Controller's Office here at the City of Pittsburgh as a fiscal auditor. And now I am in City Council as the Internal Accounts Monitor.
So every time City Council buys something for itself, you're paying attention?
Documenting it. I'm probably the one person getting it too.
Okay. So I'll make sure not to make you angry with the things that I like to do in that room and for that, for the council itself. Well, again, I don't mean to gush over it, but we're very happy you're all back or here. So let's start, Pete, let's go back to you. When you were with the city before, you were in the mayor's office and now you're working with and or for City Council. What, what do you know or what, how do you think your job is going to be different now you've moved to the other side of the fifth floor?
Well, now I'll have nine bosses instead of one. So that's, that'll be a big change. And just the budget processes on this side, you know, the official city budget is the City Council issued budget. So just, it was kind of, we passed the budget off to City Council in November and let them do the work. And now I get to do a build-in and help run all of those council budget sessions and really inform nine different people of what money they have to spend and how they can spend it and hopefully help nine different people meet their unique wants and needs in spending money on behalf of the city.
Do you feel any fear of doing a lot of work and then being told no?
I'm not afraid of it just because I think I've already accepted that that's what's going to happen.
That is nothing new, David.
Yeah.
I was trying to say it nicely. I'm sorry for trying to sugarcoat it, but.
One important lesson I learned in the first week I ever worked at the City of Pittsburgh. My first boss here was a fellow by the name of Slim Forsyth, who I'm sure you're familiar with Slim Forsyth. And he had worked in various positions on and off at the city for over 20 years. And he sat me down and explained to me what he called the eternal sameness of City Hall, where a young, new person like me comes in with a bunch of brilliant ideas and things that we can change and improvements we can make and just be prepared that there is always going to be someone standing there that tells you why you can't do that. Then he was telling me that because like he didn't want me to get discouraged that, you know, change is hard. That's not unique to city government. But you know, if we, we're all here because we care and we're persistent and people are going to tell us no, but we'll find a way to persevere.
Yeah. One of my biggest pet peeves, and it's not just in finance or or at work or in my, or in my personal life, one of my biggest pet peeves is we've always done it this way. I am, I am a huge fan of new ideas, new ways, anything that can save me time, I'm a big fan of. And I learned the same, I remember Slim coming up to the studio a couple of times when I wanted to buy stuff. When I first took over the channel and I wanted to buy stuff and he'd just go, no. And I, and I would say to him, but why not? And he says, well, we've never bought something like this before. And I said, well, it's always the first time for everything. So I feel that same way sometimes, not so much anymore, but I felt that same way of decades of no moving, sitting on my shoulders, not even positive or negative, just, just staying put. Seemed like the way it was, everything was done around here. Would you say the same thing when you got to the city?
I think whenever I came into the city, it was at the beginning of 2015, and I think that was like, change is hard and, but that was, there was a new administration at that time. And they had a year under their belt and kind of starting to change things already. And you know, we, we made great strides in getting buy-in from a lot of people. And some people didn't want the buy-in and you know, they, we worked with them to, to make sure that they were still able to do their jobs as well as possible. But I remember whenever we were transferring a lot of asset management stuff to the Cartograph system. So we needed to work with DPW foremen so that they understood how to use this, you know, this system on their iPad to enter work orders and all of the information that goes into it. And there was, one of the DPW foremen had never even used email, like not work email, not personal email, never used email in any capacity his entire life. And we handed him an iPad and said, here you go, you need to use this now. And you know, there was, he took to it like a fish in water. He was excited and not everybody's like that, but you know, you get those cases and it really, it makes you hopeful that things can change, you know? We stick with it and, and you know, we listen to people because there's people who have been here for years and years and years. And, and they might say like, this is how we've always done it and we can't change. And maybe there's a reason for that. And it's important to like, understand what they're doing and why they're doing it that way. To make sure that if we do change it, we're not going to mess anything up. And a lot of the people that have been here for years and years, they, there's a reason they've been here for years because they know how things need to be done. Yeah, we were literally just talking about this.
I did an interview a while back with PLI Director Sarah Kinter. And I was talking to her about the history of not just PLI, but BBI and PLI's predecessor. And she had told me that there were building inspectors who were walking around with a stack of index cards in their back pockets, that they were filling out index cards with a pen and then going back to the office and using a typewriter to complete their notes. And she said the same thing about being given iPads or devices with 5G connectivity and how amazed they were that they didn't have to do everything in triple kit. Or it's, yeah, it's, and how much time they saved by doing that. I think that it's, it's a great point of not only how government can change, but make everything more efficient. And it kind of start, well, not kind of, it actually starts with you guys, the three of you, and making sure that the money is there so we can have the toys and tools to do the work. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely is. Yeah, I would say so. You know, the city's budget is basically the chief policy document of the city. If we want to accomplish anything, we're going to need to be able to spend money to do it. So it's important that we work with council members in the mayor's office to build a budget that allows us to achieve all of the policies that we want to put in place.
Ria, when, when you were here, I think you said 2006, I'm guessing that the budget was done on the, the old spread, the old paper spreadsheet that my dad used to use every Saturday morning, the ledger sheet, you know, with the big binder and he'd open it up and he'd turn to the right date and the right line and fill it all out on a Saturday morning before he went to the bank to visit all his money. That's actually what he said. He'd go visit his money. I joke, but I, I almost think that I'm kind of right. What was the difference?
So not quite that bad. Like it wasn't on any sort of paper. But no, back whenever I started, the budget was a combination of multiple, very complex Excel spreadsheets, Microsoft Word documents, PowerPoint slides, org charts, a number of things. It was dozens of files that you would just piece together in order to, to compose the budget documents. And we finally went to a budget system in around, was it 2016? I think so. It was that recent, recently that we went to actual budgeting software. And that was life-changing. I think that the amount of time that that saved going from the old system to a budgeting system, it was, I actually, a long time ago, I did compile statistics on how much, how many hours it saved in staff time. And, and then also we went to what was called a Workiva to actually publish the documents. And it was amazing, like changes, like the mayor's office may have made like a simple $5,000 change, which in your head, that's not much of a change, but that could impact up to 30 pages of the budget documents. And so we have to, before we had the budgeting software and the publishing software, making those changes would be a manual process. It would, it would take hours. And then we'd have to go back and make sure, you know, double check the document multiple times to ensure the integrity and accuracy of the document. But once we went to those systems, you made the change once, just refreshed the programs and it was automatically updated. So I mean, like that, that was just so transformative right there.
If I'm understanding you correctly, because I am a budget, I mean, I understand budgeting on a much smaller scale, but if I'm understanding you correctly, making a $5,000 change, my father would have had to go back about 100 pages in his ledger book, trying to figure out where his 17 cents was. As he was trying to balance many different accounts in many different banks. For, for, for a home budget, I'm assuming it's not as big a deal as a company budget that's $600 million. Is that what the, is that what the city budget is these days? Around 600?
The operating budget is $600 million, yeah.
So when, when you are able to make a $5,000 change in any budget and it changes on 30 different pages of the final document, you're looking at, are you saving 10 hours, 20 hours? What do you think you're saving by, by having the budgeting software rather than Excel spreadsheets?
So I would say that that change could, could save about like 15 hours in staff time.
That's amazing.
Yeah, exactly. So like I said, it was truly transformative.
I, I mean, I make the, I say it jokingly, but it's 2022 and we're still talking about basic computer, what I think are basic computer programs that can make everyone's lives easier and we're still bringing those in here.
Actually, the town that I just came from, unfortunately, it was a very small town. So the budget was still Excel-based.
Wow.
And so I basically had to go backwards and work in that system again. It was so painful. And while I was there, I actually was able to purchase budget software. And I was in the process of implementing budget software there, but then I got hired here. This project has fallen to somebody else. But I think it's so important.
So ultimately what you said is, I bought this stuff for you and see you later.
Well, I put 75%, I implemented 75% of it.
Okay. When I started with the city in 2013, we were still recording on videotape here. And I hadn't recorded on videotape in over a decade of my career. So you're, so the, what you were just saying, Ria, about having to go back, having to go backward? Totally understand that. I was teaching myself technologies that I thought were dead. I had a younger coworker who had never recorded anything on videotape, much younger. He was 23 or 24 at the time. And the concepts I was trying to teach him, he wasn't understanding at all. I thought that was, so as soon as I took over the channel, I started throwing away a lot of things that were old and unnecessary.
Whenever you posted a bunch of stuff on GovDeals to sell, all the old technology and like, and looking at it and thinking, this is the stuff that pulled Jeff Bridges into Tron.
Yeah, yes. We had a, we had a 300 pound 1982 audio mixer. The person who bought it off GovDeals, we put in the description, must bring a dolly, because I wasn't picking it up again.
Must bring a dolly.
Yeah, because, and you must cart it out. I'm not helping.
Right.
Yeah.
So Paris, now that you're working in the council office, how is your, what were you doing with the, with the Controller's Office? And how does it compare or contrast to what you're doing now with the council office?
Yeah, so in the Controller's Office, I was basically auditing different trust funds. So for example, looking at purchases like made on P cards, make sure that it's following the P card policy and looking at different documentation, making sure it had all the correct approvals before it was sent off. All right, now I'm on the other side of that. I'm actually the one using the P card now and making the different purchases that need certain approvals and go through different channels to make sure that we're getting what we need or getting what we want in order for our operations to be a lot smoother during the day.
I think I know the answer to the next question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you think your work with the Controller's Office helps you in this new role, in the role you're in now, understanding the backend before you're getting, now that you're on the front end?
Yes. So now we don't have to backtrack, like someone, someone such as myself having the knowledge of how things are in the end or how they should be in the end, I can now apply those in the beginning. So we're not constantly backtracking to make sure, oh, we didn't do this right. We have to go back and do it like this. Though it's already been done right the first time, so we can just keep it moving.
For those that heard you say it, but don't know what it is, what is a P card and what are the limitations on a P card?
So yeah, so you purchasing card and I believe up to $5,000, the purchase, a purchase can be made. It has to go through the proper approvals, of course, and proper documentation needs to be, you know, corresponding with whatever that purchase is made. So it's a purchasing card that allows us to get things that are not, that are not on contract, but still fit within the policy.
So when you ever get something from me, I needed it yesterday. And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry. I'm saying that this is my blanket sorry to every budget person in this building. I am so sorry. And I'll also take the blame. I dropped something that I shouldn't have and I hope to not do it again until the next time. So, so now that you're on the front end purchasing, are you thinking, are you already thinking in terms of audit before you make the purchase?
Um, kind of. So with council, there's different, you know, we have different jurisdictions up here. So some rules or most rules that apply maybe to other departments don't necessarily carry over here because you know, they, they're, they decide basically what they do and they can implement what, you know, what they want to do. So we just basically follow that. But I do follow it in audit is making sure that everything's like approved, everything's permissible and that it makes sense, like we're just not purchasing random, I guess, operational supplies that doesn't really help with our operations.
So five million Post-it notes will not go through?
I don't think we need that many.
Okay, a million.
A million, that's still a little excessive there.
Pete, you brought up a point earlier that I want to come back to. Going from one or two bosses to nine. So Ria, I think, again, I know, I think I know the answer to this because of your past history with the Council Budget Office. But what's it going to be like going from one or two bosses from previous budget offices to now nine? What's that going to be like for you?
One of the perks of this position is I'm, I'm not the decision maker. Unfortunately, it falls to them. They have to be the ones that make the final decision. And I'll do my best to provide them with information and you know, whenever they want it, if they ever wanted opinions, but they have to be the ones to make the final decision and I fully respect that. I don't envy that. So I really just want to do the best I can to support them so that they can best, make the best decisions possible. And also understanding that not everyone's going to be happy.
That's true.
Yeah. And just to build on that, I mean, we're, we just have to be as transparent as possible. And the only real difference is that, I mean, we might, rather than having one meeting with one boss, we might have, be having nine different meetings, you know, but providing the same information. But yeah, we just want to be as transparent as possible and you know, give our recommendations. So that doesn't change right there.
It just shows, like it builds on our communication skills, right? Learning how to communicate with different personalities and sometimes you have to convey the message differently to different people based on how, you know, they receive information. So that's all it is. And adjust when you need to alter and adjust.
We're recording this in the, right in the middle of City Council's annual. uh, in the, right in the middle of city council's annual break. So at the la- at the last or the second to last meeting of city council, there was a different budget director and now they're going to come back from break. And if you were, again, recording this in the middle of summer break, but, and there's going to be a new budget director. And how did that happen from a, from a, I mean, this is like a, this is like a series on some streaming platform that didn't explain why the characters changed, uh, or how the characters changed. Um, so is there any kind of introduction that's necessary once council comes back from their break that suddenly there are three new faces, uh, doing the jobs of different people from before?
Well, the, the prior budget director, he retired.
Yeah.
And then the, the other person in my role, uh, he got another job, uh, as a town manager for, for a town in Pennsylvania. So, uh, yeah, we're just, uh, filling their spots.
Okay.
To piggyback off of what Ria just said, the person whose position I took over also retired.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing everything correctly, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm totally okay. I'm a big boy. I can be corrected. You're all going to be here for the next 30 years.
Sure. Why not? I mean, I like it here. I was sad when I left last year and I was excited to come back. So I have no plans of leaving again anytime soon.
So when I retire in 2052, we'll have another interview with all four of us. Uh, and we'll have that, and I'll play this clip back. Okay?
Yeah, it's a recap.
2052, yeah. Uh, an entire 30 year recap of budgeting. And I'm, I'm hoping for your sake, Ria.
30 years. I'm not going to tell you my age, but I don't know about if I'm going to be here another 30 years.
I, I would, I would have said, Ria, I hope for your sake that we're not even using budgeting software. It's just some sort of implant that goes right above your left eye.
Like Elon Musk's neural implant.
And all you do is think of making a $5,000 change and it's done.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That'd be great. Maybe I, maybe I should talk to my technology. I'm sorry. Say that again.
I don't know if I'd call implants though.
Maybe, maybe the Department of Innovation and Performance can think of that sooner and we'll, we'll let you know. You haven't been in the, the three of you have not been in, uh, the jobs long, but what have you noticed, uh, in your other jobs before you got here? What have you noticed, uh, the differences in budgeting or the differences in ways that people request money since the beginning of COVID? What has, what, what was it like before and what is it like now, uh, as this pandemic continues, uh, moving on indefinitely?
I, I like how we're moving with the times. We're, we're trying to get more tech, you know, technological and electronically based instead. Um, so we're finally sort of kind of moving away from the paper, which is kind of cool. Um, because when we need to go back and reference things, it makes it a lot easier to retrieve those items that we're looking for electronically, rather than having to go through maybe multiple boxes of files and things like that.
With the pandemic, a lot of, uh, cities and towns and states, um, they've had many challenges as far as revenues go. And so the American Rescue Plan, um, funding, we're, we're very fortunate to receive that. And so in some ways we're able to address, uh, things that we weren't able to address in the past and not necessarily speaking for, um, the city of Pittsburgh right now, but I know in the town that I was, that I worked at previously, uh, that gave us, um, some money that we wouldn't have had to address some water and sewer issues that were very expensive. And so, so yeah, and just because of the way that ARPA funds are set up, uh, it was pretty easy and flexible to do that.
That's great. Uh, in a perfect world, uh, budgeting utopia, council budgeting utopia. What are some things, uh, that your office could use that you don't have right now?
I can answer that. Yeah. I would want to have like a, a wall mounted, uh, screen so that like, so Pete and I, we can actually, uh, go over files together and not do it individually from our laptop. So that'd be ideal.
I, we should get you, we should get you these 90 inch touchscreens. Cause Ria, I've been in that office. So I know when you just turned and put your arms up like this, I know exactly where you are and what, but a 90 inch touchscreen that you and Pete and Paris can just walk in and just move stuff around and put it anywhere you want. Yeah, we'll work on that. We'll get that for you tomorrow. Is there anything else that the, is there anything else that the office could use that doesn't have or, or we're not even thinking about at this point?
I don't know exactly what I'm asking for, but some way that like allows the budget process to be more transparent so that, you know, uh, the, the Office of Management and Budget, Office of Management and Budget already does a tremendous job, especially on the capital side, um, which is where I had most of my experience, um, uh, working like reaching out to the public and having capital budget forums and they created, uh, pages on EngagePGH that people could go and put their input, um, because you know, we're making this budget for the people. So we want to hear from the people in the city of Pittsburgh to, to make sure that we're investing in the things that they want to invest in, um, and to make sure that they know what's going on in the budget process and, uh, they're in tune with all those budget hearings. So I don't know exactly what that would be, but just something that would help amplify the, what's going on at city hall.
If only you had a government access television channel.
Right? Yeah.
That could tell.
Something like that would be nice. Yeah.
Let's, you and I should have a meeting. Let's talk about that.
We can do that. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can work something out in the budget that we can get that up and running sometime soon. That's great. Uh, all right. So now we're going to come to the, the weirdest part of the show. I didn't prep you for this at all, but I'm going to ask each of you two question. We're going to do this in round robin. I'm just going to ask you each two questions that have nothing to do with your jobs. Okay? You ready?
Uh-oh. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so Paris, I'm going to start with you. Uh, if you were forced to delete all the apps on your phone, except three, what are the three that you're keeping?
I am keeping my banking app, um, what I'm, I'm keeping my contacts app.
Ooh.
And I'll keep my maps app.
Wow. That's, that's good. Even though you're from here, you still get lost?
Just in case I need to go somewhere else. So I don't get lost.
Ah, I like that. Um, my second, uh, question to you is what is your go-to karaoke song?
Um, karaoke songs. Oh, well, how about my go-to artist?
Sure.
Luther Vandross.
Really?
Yeah.
That is not one that somebody has said before. So I'm going to have to.
It's the classics and like 85%, 85% of people should know them.
Um, so when I never get invited to, to the council Christmas party, I'm going to make sure that, uh, somebody puts on some Luther Vandross for you and you can get up in front of everybody, uh, and do that. That's, that's a great one. Uh, Ria, what is the, uh, uh, how long would you last in a zombie apocalypse?
Oh, not very long. Um, I, I don't feel, I don't feel well with that kind of stress. Um, I would probably just give myself a zombie, uh, within the first couple of hours. So.
Uh, on your sandwiches, do you prefer fries or no fries?
I know this is very unpopular living here in Pittsburgh, but I don't dig the fries on sandwiches. I'm sorry.
Craziness.
How did you pass the interview?
I know. And like, um, since I do travel a lot, but whenever people find out I'm from Pittsburgh, Primanti Brothers comes up a lot. And I always have to tell people, I'm like, you know, you know, I, I don't like them. I'm not a fan.
Wow. Pete, we're going to have to have another talk.
I think so.
Uh, uh, moving over to Pete, uh, uh, what is the name of your pirate ship?
Of my pirate ship?
Yeah. You own a pirate ship, obviously. So what's the name of your pirate ship?
that is a good question and I had not contemplated it. Um.
I, I would have figured your big pirates fandom, you would have called it parrot or.
Yeah. I mean, the first thing that popped into my head was like SS Nutting, but like, I don't want to name anything after that guy.
That's, I, I, you know what? That's per- just the way it is. It's perfect. Just SS Nutting is perfect.
And it'll just be a failure of a pirate ship.
Did you see the guy who lost his cell phone while he was sliding into third base?
I did Rodolfo Castro. That was not, that was, uh, you know?
No, that was fun.
That's a rookie mistake.
Not real sure about that.
Well, he's a rookie, so.
Uh, Pete, tell us about, what was your, do you remember and tell us about your first ever cell phone?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. I got it, um, when I was, would have been a freshman in college.
So you were rich.
2006? No. Um, it was, I'm still on the same family plan that I've been on since then. Um, uh, I, I pay for it. I paid for it since I got it. But, uh, you know, we, we, I just had to Venmo my sister a hundred bucks every month. Uh, but I do remember.
Too much.
Um, uh, I do remember it was a fun party trick down, uh, at the Harvard on the Mon. I could stand it up. Uh, it was an old flip phone, of course, but I could stand it up on its end. And whenever I would get a text message, it would like spin in a circle. And that was like a fun little dance that we would do. We were very easily entertained down there. Um, but that, that's what I remember the most from it.
If somebody watching this wants to find out more about, uh, council budgeting procedures or has a question about the council budget or budgeting process or anything, how can they, ask those questions and get them answered? This is to any of you, not to.
The, the city's website has, uh, a good bit of information. You know, we have to walk, work, uh, hand in glove with the Office of Management and Budget for a lot of things too. So they would be a tremendous resource. Um, always reaching out to your members of council is a good idea because you know, that's the council members are the ones with their ears to the ground and know what's going on in their communities. Um, you can always reach out to us by email or, or calling our office and we're always happy to answer any questions.
That's great. Before we wrap this up, Ria or Paris, do you have any, or Pete, do you have any other tidbits of information you want to share? Tell the viewing audience?
Um, me personally, no, I think that about covers it. Um, I'm just excited to be back here in Pittsburgh. I'm excited to, uh, get right back into the budget. Um, in Virginia, our fiscal year was in July 1st through June 30th. So I just passed a budget there. So I'm right, right back into it, uh, right away.
All right. Uh, well, I'd like to thank the three of you for taking the time to do this. Uh, I know it's getting into a new job is difficult enough. Then you get to have to be grilled by me, but I appreciate you, uh, immediately replying and saying you totally would do this. Um, uh, I wish you well in these new roles, especially as they, we immediately throw you into the fire. Uh, and if you need the city channel or any other government TV channel to help you in the budgeting communication stuff, we should talk about that.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, to those of you who are watching, uh, we thank you for watching and we'll see you next time right here on Meet the People.